Mr. Harvey, can you hear us? You'll have to unmute your mic to talk.
I can.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're ready.
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, this Thanksgiving season, we thank you for all of the blessings you've bestowed on our community. Lord, at this time, we want to pray for our former Councilman, Dr. Rogers, who's going to be having a serious surgery soon. We pray for his doctors, Lord, that they'll have wisdom and skill as they treat him and for him to have a quick recovery. Lord, we pray for all those in our community that are affected by COVID, whether it be health or jobs or loss of family or friends, Lord. We pray for them to have solutions to the issues that arise with all of those items. And Lord, we pray for our nation. We pray for wisdom for our nation and for our state and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag, repeat the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present. In accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 4219 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet forum requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to this meeting, they are welcome to call 318-549-4595 at this time for public comments on any agenda item. In accordance with recently passed Act 302, you must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please know foul language, or the call will be disconnected and you will forfeit your right to speak.
Clock gone.
Yes, sir. There are no comments, sir. Mr. Harvey, can you mic, uh, mute your microphone until you're ready to cast a vote, please? Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of November 3rd, 2020. Meeting in suspense. All right, did you get that? Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey, what is your vote? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I got to add, I want to like to, excuse me, add to the agenda today. You ready, Phyllis? Uh, be item number 13. Approve report of the change order number eight for the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project for an increase of $157,164.10. Total contract, total cost of the contract with change order will be $13,534,694.08.
Second.
You second, Mr. Montgomery?
Sure, I'll second it. Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey, what's your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin, did you vote?
I did.
Motion carries.
All right, Phyllis, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Be item number 14. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $1 million from the hotel motel tax fund and $2 million from the land acquisition fund to go to the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Fund to fund the completion of Phase Two of the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? I think we can, we'll have a discussion. Mr. Roshenbach's gonna do a presentation on the projects, and he can give you a summation of how we arrived at that number yesterday as far as what they, how they progressed through the plans and processes for the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Phase Two North. Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey, what is your vote? Motion carries.
Harvey, need a motion to approve the agenda is amended?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Thank you. Did it come up, council?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Stacy Brown, Shreveport, Bossier Convention and Tourist Bureau, annual update.
Welcome. Good to see you again.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
Stacy, the clicker is turned off. You'll have to push the button on the side of it to turn it on.
I think we're on. Do I go ahead and change it, or you?
It's up there.
Oh, it's up there now. Awesome. Well, thank y'all very much. I appreciate you allowing me to come before you today to give you a little update on tourism. But first, I'd like to appoint your, or thank your appointee, Ashley Davis. She is our incoming chairman for next year from the Louisiana Boardwalk. And then also Pam Glorioso is appointed by the Bossier Office of Community Service, and she will be our treasurer next year as well. So they are both great assets to the board. We appreciate their participation. So I've got a brief PowerPoint to go over a few things that are happening in tourism. As you can see, Press Play here, that's actually our new advertising campaign we started this year to say after the lockdown, it's time to press play and get back to having fun in life. So just to give you a brief update of who we are, the Convention and Tourist Bureau is the official destination marketing and management organization for Caddo and Bossier parishes. Our staff are experts, and they work with local business advocates and the tourism industry leaders in the local, state, and national levels. So our Board of Directors really works with us, and we work with over 800 partners in the Caddo and Bossier Parish areas. We have two visitor centers, and then we have four divisions of the Bureau. Of course, the Sports Commission is the main one that most people know about, but we also have the Holiday Trail of Lights. That's in eight cities within North Louisiana that we all partner together to market the holiday season, which is our peak need period for the industry. We also have the Boomer Bus Byway, which runs from Caddo, Bossier, Webster, and Claiborne parishes through Bossier Parish. It's Highway Two, and this is a great opportunity to get people out and about. And this is one area we've been really successful in promoting, especially following the COVID with some new apps and things that we have to encourage people to get out in the rural areas of the parish. We also have the Shreveport, Bossier Film Commission and work with Pam Glorioso on that as well, and a number of different associations that we work with. This year, we worked to update, there we go, our vision and mission. The vision is to elevate Shreveport, Bossier, Louisiana as the must-experience cultural outdoor capital of the Arclitacs, and our mission is enriching life through tourism. Obviously, when COVID hit, things had to change a lot, especially in the hospitality and tourism industry. So we took that opportunity to regroup, look at a lot of research that was coming at us from not only the local level, but state, regional, as well as national, to see when we needed to start back up with our advertising, what should we advertise, and in what manner should we advertise? Because obviously, our dollars had shrunk significantly. For a couple of months, we had less than 50% of our regular revenue. So we had to be very effective with the monies that we were spending. So our staff really pivoted. We invited in some outside industry experts to kind of talk to our local industry, because it's not just about the Bureau. It's about our hospitality industry, our restaurants, our attractions, our retail shops, and making sure that they're all on board with how do we revamp and bring the tourism industry back in our area. So one of the experts that we worked with is Adam Sacks. He is the internationally and nationally known tourism economist. And so he said, well, let me take your numbers, and let me compare them to national as well as Louisiana and see how you're doing. So this one shows a little bit of how we are. So Shreveport, Bossier was severely impacted, but we are well ahead of the U.S. in tourism recovery. Our hotel demand will approach normalcy in the second half of 2021, but it will take really into 2023 until we were fully back to our 2019 numbers. So there in the occupancy, you can see we were down 22% from January through July, whereas nationally, it was down 35%. In ADR, which is average daily rate for the hotels, we were down 7%. Nationwide, it was down 18%. Revpar, which is revenue per available room, and that tells you more about the profitability of the properties. We were down 28%, but nationally, it was down 47%. So we obviously fared a lot better than a lot of other regions, and there are a number of reasons for that. One of them is our regional location and our great customer base we had already built up. We have a very high repeat visitation. We have customers that come five and six times a year to our community to really see what we have to offer, to enjoy gaming and more. And so we just needed to give them another reason to come back and talk to them about what we did have open and what was going on and what could they do safely to come back to our area. Because we are largely a drive market, that also bodes well for us. Those markets that are very highly reliant on the fly-in visitors were impacted much more severely. We do get a good number of international visitors, but that's not our primary market. So that, again, bodes well for us in having a quicker comeback than most other areas. In fact, we are carrying the state. We are highest in the state so far this year. So doing very well, but still a big struggle. And we'll talk a little bit more about budgets in just a moment. But just to give you an idea, in April, our occupancy was down 48.6%. So our total occupancy was 33.4%. I have never seen it that low, so it's unprecedented. However, by July, we were at 58.6%, which was only down 12% from the previous year. And one of the reasons I talk about July is because that's pre-hurricane effect. So we were already significantly impacting our visitors to come back to our market. The area that's slowest to come back is obviously the meetings industry. People are just, you know, most of our meetings have canceled. We've been working really diligently to rebook, and we'll talk about that more later. But that is the area that's slowest. We've seen sports coming back much quicker, especially the participant bases. Some of them, like the swimming, that's coming here next week. They will not be able to, or this week, actually, they will not be able to have participants, I mean spectators watching. The participants will be there, but not the spectators. However, in September, because of the hurricane effect, we actually increased over last year. We were at 66% occupancy, which was 12% up over 2019. So I'm sure you saw that in your tax dollars as well. So it's important to say, yes, the hurricane did help us, but we also have to kind of take that out of the mix when looking at next year and forecasting. So to tell you a little bit more about our current market overview, this is January through October. We hosted 50 meetings and conventions and group tours with a little over 11,000 hotel room nights and a little over 24,000 people. In our Press Play marketing campaign that you saw a little bit of, we had 251,000 website visits, sessions, 24,200 hotel bookings, $3.23 million in hotel revenue, direct revenue, and we booked 3,008 airfare. And the reason I can be so specific is part of this campaign is with Expedia. So these are Expedia numbers directly tied to our campaign. So they saw our ads, they clicked through to book in Expedia. However, it does not count those who saw our ads and said, "I'm a loyal Hilton Honors member, I'm gonna call Hilton and book." So we know we had this, but we actually had more. But we like to go off of what we can directly track. In the sports, obviously, that was another area where we had to cancel a lot of events and rebook. But there again, we've had some of that hurricane effect. And so the swim meet that is going to be here this week was actually scheduled to be in sulfur. Their facilities were damaged, and so they had to look elsewhere very, very quickly. Also, coming up in December, the USA Boxing. We had been working with USA Boxing prior to the hurricanes on the '21-'22 Boxing Nationals. However, when they were scheduled to be in Lake Charles this year, the facility was damaged by the hurricane, and they had to say, you know, we need to go somewhere else. They talked to us and others and said, hey, we're really working with you. We want to come to Shreveport, Bossier, and host it there. So we've been able to take advantage of some opportunities that came our way. Just a few of the successes as well. Also, the Bayou Classic in April of 2021. Another one, it was pushed back into the first part of the year. Unfortunately for them, the Superdome is under construction, and so they said, we either don't have it or we move it somewhere else. Kelly Wells, our Director of the Sports Commission, has a very good relationship with the athletic directors of both Grambling and Southern, had been talking to them for years about various events, and they said, hey, let's see, would it work in Shreveport, Bossier? And we were able to convince them that it would. Our staff serves on many boards, not only locally and regionally, but nationally as well. This next year, I'll be serving as the Vice Chairman of the National Scenic Byway Foundation. Brandy Evans, our VP of Tourism Marketing, will be the U.S. Travel Destination Council Board of Advisors. So we are very well positioned to get great information about the hospitality industry and trends. So this year, we said, you know what? Things have changed a lot since our plan the previous year. We need to really pivot and look at where do we go over the next three years? Where do we need to focus? So we brought in some industry experts that worked with us on our destination assessment back in 2019. They came in, did focus groups with a number of industry experts, as well as local leaders and some elected officials. And then they did a board retreat and a staff retreat as well. And so we came up with four high-level objectives, and they include the strategic sales and marketing, of course, collaborative experience development, and that's talking about the experience people have when they come to our area and how do we improve that and make it better so they want to come back even more? And innovative organization, proactive community engagement. So two things were very primary in that information gathering, and two things were very loud and clear. One, we need a destination plan. That destination plan takes into effect not only what the Convention and Tourist Bureau does, but what you are doing, what the City of Shreveport is doing, what the parishes are doing, what other organizations like Committee of 100 are doing. What are all those things that are coming together? And how do we better position ourselves as a destination? And see where are the gaps? Are there some things that we need to address as a community? And so that's one of the areas we'll be working on over the next year. And also, brand development. The brand Louisiana's Other Side, we've had that for a number of years. It still positions well with our visitors, but locally, it's really not reflective of us currently. And so we want to go ahead and look at branding, not just for the Convention and Tourist Bureau, but for our communities overall. You've got to get them interested in coming to this area before you can say, be Bossier. Be Bossier is terrific, but it's after you've already got them looking this way. So let's get them looking this way and then take them the next step. I was able to give you the printed business plan and budget. We did the high-tech with our color printer at the office and stayed low-cost. But I have some more details in there for you, so I'm gonna kind of flip through these next slides here, since I've got those. Just to give you a little overview of our different departments, our administrative department. So I have to say this because I'm very proud of it. We had another clean zero exception audit. We worked very hard on making sure that we utilize the funds that we are entrusted very carefully and that we document properly to be able to receive that zero exception audit. We also received our Destination Marketing Association DMAP accreditation. We have received that a number of years ago. We went through kind of a checkup four years ago, and this year, we had to fully re-accredit ourselves. And it's about 80 different standards that we have to meet or exceed to be able to get that designation. And I think we were only one of 12 internationally that received that this year. So it is a very high honor. We also worked on updating our systems and really working to increase efficiency and cut some costs. In the communications area, you know, as you know, tourism plays a major role in our economy. So we have to really look at those returns and making sure that we're placing those dollars in the right areas to provide that return. So for every $1 we invested in the Press Play campaign, and this, my numbers are a little bit earlier on this. This was May through the end of July. For every dollar we invested, we generated $8.16 in hotel revenue. So that's a pretty darn good return. That's not including all the other money that they spent in our community just on those hotel rooms. In our convention department, obviously, this is the area that is most challenged right now. So we have been working not only on rebooking events for the future, but also trying to take this opportunity to bring some people in. We are actually doing some site visits again. So last week, at the first of the week, we had the OWAA Outdoor Writers Association. Their meeting planner was in town, looking at us for either '21 or '22 to bring the writers' conference to our area. Then at the end of the week, we hosted the Meeting Planners International Dallas Chapter Board Retreat. So you think Dallas, they know all about us, right? This was 15 of the top planners from Dallas. They came over here, did a great reception for them at the convention center, took them over into East Bank. They had a great meal there, went to Horseshoe and a number of other locations. Of course, Don Tubbs gives them a great experience as they're headed out of town with his special cooking there. But what we found out is that half of them had never been to Shreveport, Bossier. These are meeting planners in Dallas. Some of them didn't even know we had casinos. So we can't take it for granted that these people know what we have. They were thoroughly pleased with what they saw, and we will be generating business from those meeting planners that were here. So it's those little things that bring that future business. And of course, sports. You've seen some of the things that are coming up just within the next few weeks. They have been working very diligently, not only to rebook the things that had to cancel, but also to work on bringing new business into our community. One of the areas that's really working for next year is obviously the outdoor events, and we have a number of fishing tournaments and other outdoor activities coming up for next year. So that's where I believe we will be most impactful. However, even with the cancellations for this year, we still generated over $3 million in economic impact with those that we've already been able to host. So just to give you a little budget overview, we expect our budgeted revenue for next year to be $3.8 million. That's down 16% from where we were in 2019, about $4.5 million. But it's up about 5% from where we expect to end this year, about $3.6 million. So we are expecting to surpass our 2019 numbers in 2023. So it's gonna take us a little while to get there, but we will. One of the things to point out is that, yes, our revenue is down, obviously, but we have been able to bring back much quicker. So our first estimates were that we would be down about $1.6 million and that we would have to dip into some of our reserves to keep us going. However, our staff was very successful in doing some tremendous budget cuts, doing as much internally as we could, so we were able to cut those expenses. But we were also very much able to bring people back, and then, of course, a little bit of help from the hurricanes as well. So we actually are not going to have to dip into our reserves, and we'll end up about a million down instead of about a million six. So we are really excited about next year and the opportunities that we have. If you'll look in your book, the one that says Budget with the blue target right there on front, if you go to page four, you'll see that is the Division Budgets. So down at the bottom there, you can see the Sports Commission Reserve and Sports Commission Events. So the Sports Commission every year has worked on putting some money aside for future events and to have a reserve as well for those, just in case. Then you see the Events Budget. And if you notice in the Bureau Operating Budget, you'll also see a Sports Department. So within the Bureau's regular budget, we budget all the operations of the Sports Commission. So we pay for the staffing, all the things they do to generate sales, the trade shows, the sales calls. All of those kinds of things are paid out of the Bureau budget. The Events Budget is strictly to bring in those events, to actually host them. So that is the actual funding for those events. For the Sports Commission, we want to say a very special thank you to Councilman Don Williams. He was one of our initial board members that got us going and headed on the right track and has been a tremendous asset for us. And I understand, Mayor, you're keeping him very busy and counsel, so he is going to be focusing a little bit more on that and is stepping away from the Sports Commission. And Councilman Free has agreed to step into that role, so he'll be joining us tomorrow, bright and early. We meet at 8:00. So we are excited about having you there in the morning.
Wow. He doesn't get up till nine, Stacy.
We'll feed you some breakfast. And also, I don't know, is Clay here? I didn't see him earlier. Clay Bohannon is also your appointee, and he does a phenomenal job, and we really appreciate all that you provide as follows the facilities and the additional assistance that y'all provide. So again, President Montgomery, Mayor, Council, I appreciate y'all allowing me to come before you today, and I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Stacy, I'd just like to say, during the lockdown, my wife and I did one of the Boomer Bus Byway tours, and it was a delightful way to spend a day.
Awesome.
Really, very, very well done. I commend you on all of the budget adjustments that you had to make on the fly. It was a pretty crazy year. And it looks like for 2021, your beginning fund balance and your ending fund balance are the same. So it's a sustainable budget going forward.
Right, and we've actually identified what we would cut at the first of the year if we do go into lockdowns or, you know, things happen and we have to cancel some events. We've already made plans for what that will be.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for a very thorough presentation and appreciate all you do.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all. Have a great day. Do you want me to turn this off?
You can leave it on, it's fine.
Okay.
Louise Draughty, United Way, 211, update?
Good afternoon.
Are you?
So I do apologize, there was miscommunication on my part, so I will not have a presentation, but I will be brief. but I will be brief. So I'm Louise Bearmore Droudi with United Way of Northwest Louisiana, and I'm the Director of 211. And back in November, November 15th of 2017, we silently turned 211 back on. And since that, we have had a lot of positive aspects that have happened with 211. We are now statewide, so anywhere you go in the state of Louisiana, you'll be able to get connected to 211. Furthermore, we have partnered with the state. And so we have now partnered with the Louisiana Healthcare Connections, and we are assisting in the opioid crisis. And in January of 2021, you will be able to text the word opioid to 898-211 and be able to get information on medication, rehabilitation assistance, rehab meetings and so forth. We've also partnered with the Department of Corrections. And with reentry, we help those who are trying to come out of the prison system and to help get them stabilized as law-abiding, productive citizens. We've partnered with the Louisiana Department of Health with COVID-19, and we have started answering phone calls from March of 2020. And when someone calls, they are given any and all information related to COVID. We also partnered with the DCFS, and we were able to connect people to various shelters and other type of resources. As you all know, with this hurricane season, it's certainly been unprecedented. And so we were able to get those needing help, we were able to get them to safety. We have keyword benefits now, such if you type in D-Saps to 898-211, it will help you apply, it will give you feedback, and it will answer any questions you may have. Also, when the state pushed out the rental assistance, we took in the applications and we assisted those clients with that as well. There are three ways to contact us. You can go online to unitedwaynwa.org/211 and locate resources that way. You can text 898-211, or you can call 211 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So in Bossier City, from January 1st of 2020 to October 31st of 2020, in Bossier City, we've answered 540 COVID-19-related phone calls. We answered and assisted with applications for 84 people out of Bossier City. For Hurricane Laura, we assisted 95 people. And then the total calls out of Bossier City from this year have been 4,186. For the entire Northwest region, we have answered 26,906 calls. Thank you for your time. Do y'all have any questions?
Questions, Counsel? Thank you very much.
No, thank y'all. Y'all have a great day.
You too.
Stacy Fernandez, City Finance Director, monthly financial report for ending of October.
Are we going to drill down into this today?
Preferably not. Okay, on page one is our revenue by fund, and we're at 110%. The portion related to the general fund strictly for sales tax is at 105%. Page two, our expenses, and we are at 92%. Page three is our sales tax, and we are actually 1.3% better than last year. And that is due to audit collections. If we backed that out, we'd be down 6%. Page four is our manning report. We have 666 employees, which is one less than last month and 32 less than budget. And page five is our water and sewer. For the month, it's not very well, it's only 48%. But year-to-date, we're at 117%. We're 100% to budget, and we're 133% to the rolling 12 months. Do you have any questions about that? Counsel, I also wanted to notify y'all that last meeting, we opened bids for the East Bank Fire Station. And since we don't have adequate funding for any of those bids, we're rejecting all those bids. And we'll try and, next year, come up with the funding and go out to bid again.
All right. Upon that disclosure, I'd like a motion, please, to reject the bid.
I make a motion to reject all the bids for the fire station.
I second.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Darby, did that pass, pop up for you? Thank you. Motion carries. Ben Rochenbach, City Engineer, monthly project report.
Good afternoon, Counsel, Mayor. Each of y'all should have a copy of the report there in front of you, as well as some spreadsheets and additional information if you want to peruse and get a little more detail on each one of these projects. Like the credit where credits do, Clinton Patrick, my Assistant City Engineer, has done a lot of the heavy lifting as it relates to the material you're looking at in this presentation. So we're starting to gain a little steam in the engineering department. Just quick general overview, 150 million in ongoing design and construction projects. We've got 81 million currently under construction. That's about a $3 million increase from last month. Five projects in design or bidding, 23 projects under construction, and seven subdivisions in or nearing the construction phase. Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Phase 1. Many of y'all have seen the construction going on out there. Even with the 75 calendar days that were approved back earlier this month, we're still showing them to be a little behind schedule with 89% of the time elapsed and 79% complete. We're optimistic that as they gain speed, we've got good weather, that they're going to be fine with the anticipated completion date of January 14th. Both east and westbound lanes are open. Their primary focus right now is completing the portion of Old Benton Road to where that Phase 2 of the carriageway will begin. So they've done a lot of work in cleaning up that project over the last 90 days. Phase 2, sorry for the tech size there. Justin will be back on December 1st and give a very detailed presentation on the state of that project. Plan review comments on all of the final drawings have been reviewed. We submitted that back to the design firm for implementation. We expect to have that complete by the 1st of December. The final opinion of construction cost is complete. And again, there'll be more detail on that on the December 1st. But based on that information, we've been doing a little preemptive work. That's the reason for the ordinance that's on the books today, to make sure that there's sufficient funding there when we go out to bids early in the year next year. We've been talking a lot about the seepage analysis. That is complete and has been submitted to the Corps. No real big surprises there, we were excited about that. Utility relocation, still kind of an ongoing soap opera, but those appear to be in progress and nearing completion. And we don't expect any delays related to that effort. And again, like I mentioned, Justin will have a laundry list of things to review with y'all early next month. Any questions with that project before I move on? Swan Lake Road. Can you, is there a way to make it not so enlarged there? Perfect. Thanks for enlarging the last slide. Very visible project, looking for completion towards the end of this year. You've got all of the work really that's going on right now is the Bossier portion. So that portion that extends south and under I-20 to the south side there. They're a little ahead of schedule, about 84% complete with only 76% of the time elapsed. But again, this is in DOTD time, which is working days and not calendar days. So 2020 has not been a great year for working days. Innovation Drive, this is a picture as of yesterday. There's your pretty new guardrails in. Trying to pull some green stamps here. The project is now down to striping. Had a conversation with Councilman Montgomery today, and he made a few phone calls, so we expect to have some striping on the pavement, ready for November 23rd opening, which is six days from today.
And prior to the big shopping holiday.
Prior to the big shopping day. So beautiful road, looks really good out there. You can see the street lights are up. We're still waiting for AEP to energize those. But as far as our concerns, we're looking forward to getting that project open and allowing citizens to use it. Melrose Drive Extension, big news here is we issued a notice to proceed on the 13th of this month. The completion date on that is in July. We expect to see serious construction on that starting late January, early February.
Wouldn't they, wouldn't they, because I was out there the other day, they got a tour putting, they put water in?
That's for the utility, so that's the water and sewer work. And a lot of that work is complete. They're working to make the sewer connections on Green Acres Place, the sewer lift station there. So some real deep and technical stuff. Most of the hard part of that's done. So that'll all be out of the way before that street work starts. Coleman Street, we're still waiting to see, issue into the notice to proceed by DOTD. We have been working with Bossier High and the various stakeholders there to get that going, but it is, it's under DOTD purview. LPR Camera Project, outside of getting AEP to power up, I think there's five or six cameras that still need power. That project is complete. Some of y'all may have noticed those around town. Max Bayou is another one. We're showing here 47% complete, 30% time elapsed, but that's just because we haven't got the pay application in. They're really done. You can see there, they're laying side, that was your wood construction, local contractor, and they killed it, very proud of how that project turned out. Yeah, it was fast. Public works generator project is complete. We're working on substantial completion on that. Expect to issue that this, and then this project will come off the presentation. Bossier City Fire Department Burn Building, kind of see off in the distance there. They're right on schedule, starting to make good progress out there. Animal Control Facility, they continue to make strides. This weather has been very good. They've actually picked up a little time over the last 90 days on that project. And we're looking forward to getting this one off the ledger. They're somewhere around 70% complete with that project. Tensley Athletic Ball Fields, huge project. Current contract amount, we're looking at about $12,500,000. You can see over the last couple of weeks, we've been delving into the soap opera of AstroTurf for the fields out there, which we're looking at are the existing fields. And there is a lot of work that goes on below that turf, I'll just tell you that. But it's an exciting project, and we're starting to turn the corner on it. Public Service Commission Lighting Project, kind of cool. These are pictures of the Century Link Center. They're still working there, but one item of note, albeit it didn't come to fruition, we were complete by that November 13th deadline to have that joker lit up. And you can just tell by the pictures, it's a pretty dramatic difference with the new lighting in there. We don't have any pictures yet of the other two for the Public Works and Police Station. We kicked those off here recently, and work has started on both of those projects. Metal viewing Tensley Concessions and Restrooms, both of those projects are complete. This will be the last slide I have on those two facilities. East Bank restroom, we're getting close to the end. We're still working with the contractor and designers on ensuring that that project gets punched out, just a little cleanup and things of that nature. If you've been down to East Bank, you've seen a bevy of activity down there. They are working hard to get that area polished up.
Really the shrubs.
Yeah, the shrubs are a very good example, the trees, shrubs. They were doing landscape beds this afternoon, starting to really look a lot better out there. Field of Dreams Restrooms, this one is showing to be behind, but they have made significant leaps in the product of that, in the production of that project over the last 30 days or so. So we still have hope that they'll be substantially complete by that December 5th date. But if not, I know Mike's in here, come see me. But they are working diligently on that. Mike Woods Park, thought we had that one done. We're showing it as 100% complete, and then we got a big rain and found a couple of other spots where we needed to add some drains out there, and we got such a good deal on it. We had the contractor go out and order some more materials and put some more piping out there just to keep that water off. This is on the very, trying to get my bearings, but the very eastern portion of Mike Woods Park. The Women's Veterans Memorial, that is complete. Had a huge dedication last week, very well attended, and we'll be taking this one off the list, but we were excited to be a part of that project. Citywide Street Improvements, I know all the various council districts, five of those have been actively in y'all's communities, looking for areas that need to be improved. We looked at all five districts. Our plan is to put together bid packages for those five. We're considering what we're going to call a sixth sidewalk improvement package, just to kind of separate that work from the street work, but that will require council approval before we do that. Over nine miles of requested street repairs have been made. We have over 60 areas of requested sidewalk and curb repairs. We've got that estimated at just north of $12 million. Current budget is $3.5 million. And our next plan, you guys will be getting phone calls from us to sit down and go through and make sure that our priorities and your priorities align. And then we'll be putting those bid packages together and getting those on the streets to get some work done.
I like that, South Bossier.
Sir?
Just a little bit over, wasn't it?
Slightly over, but that's, that was exactly what we expected to see. What our plan is moving forward is to build this into a five-year kind of running capital plan that we can modify and prioritize year over year. And this will be, this is a very good genesis to that effort. So thought this slide was pretty powerful. It's still a work in progress, but it shows you how much work in the various areas of town, where those requests came in and things like that. So it's going to be a pretty massive endeavor, just the $3.5 million portion.
I appreciate you marking it, South Bossier. What's the significance of the red versus the blue?
I don't want to lie to you, Clinton, do you?
Red, red is streets, and blue is the subway. Okay.
You could just put one giant pushpin over South Bossier.
Yeah. Well, we were going to enlarge anyway, but yeah.
That's great.
But that does give you a pretty good visual as to the scope of work. And it's not, it's everywhere, there's need.
Is this something, you're talking about the significance of that slide, that we could put on the website?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a I mean, I think it's important so that the citizens of Bossier can access and see, you know, that's a simple way that people can see the activity that's fixing to go on, you know, in their respective neighborhoods and council districts. So I would, that and put the, what do you, the little significant, the little box down there that shows blue is for?
Oh, yeah, a legend. A legend?
Yes. What that stands for, I think that's important.
And, and i- if you'll allow us a little time, we'll, we'll work to get it on the website, but we'll clean that up to where it makes a little more sense, and we might have to make it a few different maps.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I like that. I mean, it's just clear and straightforward, and by council district and...
Yeah. And each one of those emblems there is, is denotes a different council district and so on and so forth. So still a lot of work to do there, but, but we are making some headway. Private Development, I won't go through all of this, but we have seen a pretty significant uptick in, in just requests, meetings, moving some of these subdivisions forward. Fortunately, the home buying doesn't seem to be slowing down at all. Couple just projects to mention here, the Highway Seventy-One Lighting Phase Two, that's in design. The East Bank Fire Station, y'all are well aware, based on today's meeting, we're also working to add an ADA restroom at the Tinsley Ballfields. We started, initiated the design for a new restroom out at the Swan Lake Ballfield. If y'all are familiar, the old red masonry restroom that's out there is gonna get replaced, is what this project will do. So we're excited about that. I know Parks and Rec is as well. And then we also have the South Bossier Miscellaneous Capital Improvements. Those are in design right now. Honorable Mentions, I'll keep it brief. Flood Management, there's always, there was a meeting today, the Region One Watershed Initiative. That work continues. We constantly have conversations with GOSET, Bossier Parish Levy District, and the Bossier Parish Police Jury regarding flood management. And we have started working on a draft of floodway management ordinance that will give us a little more teeth in, in directing these designers on how they need to work their, their stormwater designs for development. Traffic Engineering, the big thing to report here is Urban Systems. They began the Phase One, what we're calling Phase One Data Collection on six critical intersections last week, and those were Airline Drive at Highway Eighty, East Texas, Benton Road at Highway Eighty, Barksdale Highway at the Shreveport-Barksdale Bridge. So y'all are familiar with, with where that's at, right in front of the base. Viking Drive at Benton Road, Bean Boulevard at Airline Drive, and then Jimmy Davis there on Highway Seventy-One South. And we want to use that information to kind of guide the next steps on this, this project. We've been communicating with DOTD, looking to get their involvement, but didn't want to delay our efforts with this initiative any further, so we felt like this was a good start. Those are probably the sixth most critical intersections, if you will, and a good representation of where we have problems in Bossier City. Property Standards continue to respond to our great number of complaints throughout town. That could be grass cutting, cars, tires. I'm excited to say the tile, tire removal efforts are underway. And then today, I'm looking for y'all to have your first reading on the development of a succession plan for our department head there in Property Standards, and been working with the council and, and, and the mayor's office on putting something together for that. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you all.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P two zero dash two seven, Shed Road at Meadowview Sewer Repair.
Counsel, this project engineer's estimate is four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, funded from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. There was one addendum, and it provided a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and provided questions and answers. The first bid is from David Lawler Construction, Inc. The bid bond is included. He acknowledges the addendum. The bid is for two hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars. Two eight six, five two six. The next bid is from Horseshoe Construction, Inc. The bid bond is included. They acknowledge the addendum. It's for two hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty cents. Two three three, six eight four, point two zero. The next bid is from Jaybor Corporation. The bid bond is included. They acknowledge the addendum. It's for four hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. Four four seven, one five three, point two zero. And the last bid is from Poli Construction, Inc. The bid bond is included. They acknowledge the addendum. It's for two hundred and twelve thousand dollars even. Two one two, zero zero zero. I ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Some move, some move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Good bids. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to move five hundred thousand dollars from the Disaster Reserve Fund to the Century Link Center to cover their expenses through February twenty twenty-one, and to pay for their twenty twenty avalorium taxes. Final reading?
Some move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to move the four hundred thousand dollars allocated for the Swan Lake Park restroom in Ordinance One Twenty-Five of twenty twenty to contingency in the twenty twenty-one sales tax capital improvement budget. Final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance One Thirty-five of twenty twenty, increasing the appropriated amount to two hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars to replace an additional four hundred and eighty linear foot of twenty-inch pipeline using sewer capital contingency funds. Final reading?
A move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Yay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to move approximately two million dollars in capital expense from the Walter O. Bigby Fund four fifteen to the twenty fifteen LCDA Fund four ninety-five to close out Walter O. Bigby portion of the twenty fifteen LCDA bond. Final reading?
Some move. I'll second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Yay.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to enter into the attached amendment locals, amended local services agreement with the parish of Bossier, and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof. Final reading?
Some move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, introducing ordinance authorizing the reclassification of a traffic analyst position to a traffic control tech, and an increase in the salary for the traffic control tech position in the traffic engineering division, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance to repair sewer line at the La Sands Pump Station at a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Axis Construction for completion of work. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance, amending ordinance One Oh Five of twenty twenty, increasing the appropriated amount to two hundred and six thousand dollars to fund improvements to a Southern, to the Southern Gardens Pump Station using sewer capital contingency funds. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Yay.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance approving the engagement of Heard McElroy and Vestral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the City of Bossier City, Century Link Arena Fund, Firemen's Pension and Relief Fund, and Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund. First reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Stacy, the fees on the audit, are they, did they remain consistent?
They're remaining, they're the same, yes, sir. Which is way down from the people we used to use, KPMG.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance authorizing positions to be filled in the City of Bossier City, Property Sanders Division of the Engineering Department, as a result of a retirement and a promotion, and to add a temporary office worker position using the available salary range of the division, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First reading?
Some move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Bless you.
Showed the leader.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communication officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Yay.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to fill a vacant truck driver one position, a vacant laborer one, and a laborer two position, and an operator one position in Public Works. First and final reading?
A move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Larkin? Thank you. Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, adopting the City of Bossier City's current investment policy. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Stacy, did this include that?
Yes.
Change that we made with Sisong?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
By the way, he has to get our approval before he does anyway.
Right. Yeah, just for the council's information, Stacy and I had a conference call with Michael Weinstein with Sisong, who's our investment advisor, and where the majority of our funds are invested. And there was an alternative to investing in corporate bonds, if in fact that rate exceeded what we normally do, which is municipal bonds. And there are certain parameters you have to follow as far as ratings and the quality of the debt that you purchase. So, but he cannot make that choice without the approval of both Stacy and myself. So, and if we did in fact determine that that was a wise decision to increase our earnings potential, we would certainly notify the council and administration. Fairly stated?
Yes, sir. Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, adopting questionnaire from the Legislative Auditor, and the city's answer there too. First and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve the Bossier City Council twenty twenty-one meeting schedule?
Some move.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number two for the East Bank restroom project with an increase of four thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty cents for a contract price with change order three hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents.
A move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Yay.
I think Tommy's got that recorded.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
He's got the easy.
Yeah.
Approve report of change order number eight for the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvement Project for an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars and ten cents. Total cost of contract with change order thirteen million, five hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and eight cents.
Some move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Trying to find my arrow. There it is. Got lost.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance appropriating one million dollars from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund and two million dollars from the Land Acquisition Fund to go to the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Fund to fund the completion of Phase Two of the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway. First reading?
Some move. Second.
Questions from the audience? And counsel, I think Mr. Roshenbach explained that, and the fact that we want to advertise for bids in December, and let the bids in January dictated that we add this today so that it can be approved at the first meeting in December, and we'll have the money allocated by law, so that we can proceed with the bid process. So, anyway, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby and Mr. Harvey?
Yay.
Thank you.
Any other business, Mayor?
Mr. Montgomery? All agenda items for the next council meeting are going to be due Wednesday at three P.M. due to the Thanksgiving holidays.
Wednesday?
Three P.M.
November twenty-fifth?
Yes.
And I think you're the final authority, Mr. Montgomery, on that, aren't you?
Emma?
You are.
Yes, sir.
You are now.
All right, I like that.
It's been requested that any add-ons that come in after that date go by, go through Mr. Montgomery.
All right. So we set the record straight here.
That's right.
So that's enough to get them in before three, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So on behalf of the council, we'd like to wish everyone a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving, and enjoy your family and friends. It's well deserved. Everyone have a great week. Evening, gentlemen.